Welcome to the May 25th, 2021 regular meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk.
Close session for today, May 25th, 2021. Item one, conference with legal negotiator pursuant to government code 54957.6 with county-designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins and Shay Johnson regarding employee organization service employees in international union. Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation.
Any public comment on either or both items?
There is none at this time.
With that, we'll turn into closed session. Welcome back to the Tuesday, May 25th, 2021, regular meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. Will everyone please stand and do the pledge with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can we have a report out for the closed session?
Yes, report out for closed session. Item one, conference of labor negotiator pursuant to government code 54957.6 with county-designated labor negotiator Judy Hawkins and Shay Johnson regarding employee organization service employees in international union. Or action, no reportable action. Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re-anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation. Or action, no reportable action.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, we'll move on to staff announcements. This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. We'll start off with Susan.
Great. Okay, the Calaveras Senior Providers Network met on Friday, and we got a presentation on the California COVID-19 Rent Relief Program. This is a really nice program. It can give your landlord up to 80% of their past due rent if they're willing to waive the other 20%. If your landlord doesn't want to participate, the renter can still apply and get 25%, which gets paid to the landlord. To apply for that, you want to go to housingiskey.com, or you can call 833-430-2122. Or you can call Sierra Hope locally. They'll help you with the application process. There are a lot of documents you have to upload online, so if you need that help to get your application through, call Sierra Hope for an appointment. Their number is 209-736-6792. The other thing is that produce days have started again, and produce days, you can go to the Resource Center and get free produce. There is a schedule on their website. That's T-R-C-A-C.org. There are no income requirements for this. You just have to go and show up and get free produce. You can call 209-736-4011, or 209-754-4011, and that's also a really great program. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Further staff announcements?
Yes, good morning Chair Stoppard, respective board members, Deputy Clerk of the Board, and our Calaveras community, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. Today, our agency would like to honor our animal service volunteers who in April gave over 255 hours of their time to those in our care. Our volunteers typically average over 200 hours each month helping us care for our animals. In April, Animal Services had kind humans adopt 11 animals, plus three dogs and eight puppies that we found abandoned that needed to be bottle-fed go-to rescues. We share our adoptable animals through different forms of media, including our local newspaper and social media, including Facebook. Please visit our Facebook to check out our animals and fur babies that need fur over homes. Our rabies and microchip clinic we held in early May was another success. There were 118 rabies shots given, and 63 animals received microchips. We also had 21 new and/or renewed dog licenses generated that day. This was all done in four hours. We are very grateful for Dr. Jeannie Ringette, who has volunteered her time on numerous occasions to make our free clinics a success. The amount of donations our Calaveras community gave that day was also a record-breaking amount of over $5,000. Thank you, friends of Calaveras Animal Services, for always being there for us. We deeply appreciate everything that you do. You are truly the backbone of our animal service operations and our staff as well. Our next free rabies clinic, which is being displayed intermittently throughout this Board of Supervisors meeting, will be held here at the Government Center Saturday, June 5th. This will be the last clinic until September, as it is too hot for our humans and our animals in July and August. The September clinic will also be held in Angels Camp at Spence Feed and Supply. A heartfelt thank you goes out to our Calaveras community for their continued support and for loving those in our care. Thank you very much, Calaveras community.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. I'll be in later to get some of your candy out of your bowl.
Sounds good, Supervisor Stoppard.
We have Laura Larson.
Ms. Larson.
Good morning. Yes, good morning, Board Supervisors and Calaveras County citizens. As you can imagine, a courtroom is not a place where you would find scenes of celebration and tears, unless that is if you're sitting in drug court. May is National Drug Court Month, and Calaveras County, along with 4,000 other drug courts nationwide, are celebrating the journey and successes of those who seek services through a drug court. You may recall, last year, Calaveras County presented to the Board of Supervisors that we were opening up our first dependency drug court. It's called Team Court, together, easy to choose from. This journey started many, over 14 months ago, when Dave Singers, Doug Sanders, Pat King, Jomo Stewart, David Pacman, Julie Spoljarek, and Kristen Stranger at the time, sat and talked about what would the vision be to support our moms and dads who are involved in child welfare through the journey of sobriety and seeking sobriety, and celebrating them when they meet their goals, and also encouraging them when they haven't. And that's what brought us to today in celebrating the anniversary of Team Court up and running every week. So with that, I would like to share with you an article that was shared in the Enterprise, but it was also picked up by the Child Welfare Information Gateway, which is a database that shares things that are happening within child welfare nationwide. So, in June 2020, Calaveras County Superior Court opened the doors of its newly-formed dependency drug court, called Team Court. Providing over the court is Calaveras County Superior Court Judge Dave Sanders, with support from Child Welfare County Council, Julie Spoljarek, Deputy Director of Social Services, Laura Larson, and Deputy Director of Behavior Health, Wendy Alst. The Social Service also provides weekly updates to the court members so that we know exactly what transpired with the plan throughout the prior week. Team Court is a voluntary program designed to address the impacts that sudden shoes moms and dads can experience and impact their ability to parent their children. Regardless of how big or small the success is, Team Court is a place of celebration and support, even when there are missteps in recovery. Doug Sanders can provide guidance and effective stage for each participant by ensuring they understand recovery is a lifelong pursuit and requires help from others. He encourages participants to connect and stay connected to their sober support system, community members, and chosen family members who can help them sustain their recovery. The underlying message from Team Court and all of its participants is that they are not alone in their pursuit of recovery, and there is nothing that they cannot overcome to achieve their sobriety. Team Court meets weekly to review the participants' prior week successes and struggles. The participants are asked to share what worked well for them and what were the challenges they faced. Participating peers are also asked to provide encouragement and support to one another. As participants meet recovery goals, they are celebrated by offering donated gift cards. When parents, when there are missteps and are not able to meet their goals, they are offered encouragement, but never punishment or disappointment. Team Court currently has four participants whose names and information is confidential. We do hope that as word travels, we will get more child welfare moms and dads participate in Team Court, because at the end of the day, Team Court is about supporting our parents through their life journey of sobriety, and this is a place where that can work through. We did interview one participant, and she stated she loves Team Court. It's a place where she can come and be encouraged, not only by the judge and by the other members there, but also by her peers, and it's a place where she can find encouragement. So with that, I know that I have some other team members who are, Julie Spoljarek is in the forum there with you all, and I have some other folks on the team if they'd like to speak up and say something.
Good morning, Julie. Can I take off?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Good morning, Julie Spoljarek, Deputy County Counsel. May I be heard on the Team Court information?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I was part of the initial team that started Team Court, and it did start a long time ago. With COVID, we were delayed in starting, but we did start in June. We have about five to seven members who have come through the court. It's been an amazing experience to watch people really grow. I mean, the participants are incredibly open and honest in talking with the judge each week about their struggles and their successes. I mean, really, the participants are the stars, and it's been really fun to watch how it's worked for some. I mean, some people continue to struggle. It's a tough disease to try to address, so, I mean, we totally understand that. Never is the judge demeaning or punitive in any way when there's a struggle by a participant. The judge only focuses on the positive, what they can do next week to bring themselves back up, and how they can move forward. And really, I just want to thank the judge because he's been instrumental. He is the, you know, the lead person. He's the person who meets with the participants every week, and he has been there. He's the only one who does it. It is really based on his kind and empathetic and dedicated personality that it's such a success. So we hope you guys continue to support it. We really think it's an amazing process. So thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. Ms. Allen?
Good morning. My name is Corey Allen, and I'm also here to speak about what Laura and Julie have referred to. I'm your Health and Human Services Agency Director. What Calaveras County's Team Court has sort of identified with is by taking the word "drug" out of "drug court," you remember the person underneath the disease. And they're demonstrating and modeling teaming and collaboration and true acknowledgement of the human spirit, and by doing that, they're really allowing the lift of people who are really working hard to overcome this difficult disease. So with that, I really wanted to acknowledge the outstanding efforts. I will say that the Honorable Leonard Edwards, who is a worldwide expert and developer of drug courts, would absolutely applaud the efforts that have been done here in Calaveras County.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Any further comments, Ms. Larson?
Only that I am very proud to be part of this innovative team. This was a very big lift, as Julie shared. It started so long ago, and to behalf of Human Service Agency and our partner agencies, we are truly committed to supporting our families as they grow and change. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or presentations?
None at this time.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to the public health update. Public health services receive an update presentation from staff on COVID-19 novel coronavirus. Ms. Allen, good to see you again.
Good morning. Make sure that this is up here. Look at that, we're working it out well today. Okay, back that up for you. Good morning, members of the Board, Chairman Stoppard, Corey Allen, Health and Human Services Agency Director, here representing the Public Health Department and its work around the novel coronavirus COVID-19 response. With me today is Deputy Director Colleen Rodriguez to answer any specific questions that may arise, Doug Archer, your CEO of Dignity Health, and your Health Officer, Dr. Ramirez. Let's go through just your basic numbers as of updated yesterday 4:00 p.m. We have conducted 42,796 tests to date. Total confirmed cases have totaled 2,159. You currently have active, eight active cases, and zero hospitalizations. 2,095 individuals have recovered, and as we regret to inform the public, we once again have experienced one additional death due to the COVID virus, and that is a female who was aged between 80 and 85 years of age. Of course, our agency's condolences go to the loved ones of that individual. Vaccinations are at 34,047. The tier assignment, we do continue to work under the color-coded tiers. As of yesterday, we remain in the orange. Now, last time I presented, I noted the red zone there on the west of us, but look at the yellow coming in from the east. So we're hoping to continue on that trajectory. How do we do that? Common sense techniques of wearing your mask properly, hand washing, and of course, getting that vaccine, and that's going to help us really move through. But I bet you what we're really worried about and thinking about is what's next. So before I get into what's going to change with this blueprint, I want to look at our current risk level. I mentioned we're in orange, that's known as moderate. In Calaveras County, we're seeing about 4.5 new COVID-19 cases per day, per 100,000. Statewide in California, that number is at 3.2, so we're slightly above. We have an adjusted case rate due to our small nature, and that remains also at 4.5, but our positivity rate over a seven-day average is at 3.2%, and that is a little higher than the state of California. Comparatively to the counties nearby, we have eight active cases, eight new, and we're at 56 deaths. Amador is a little higher at 12, Tuolumne at 10 active cases, and you can see where we lie as we look at our neighbors.
One question, Ms. Allen. I'm sorry to interrupt. When you showed the map earlier, how did Amador County as yellow? And you just suggested that it's orange, so...
Yes, that would be my data error in pulling my data, and in fact, most of what is provided today, I've had slight changes even since 6:00 p.m. last night, so I did miss that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm just curious.
Well, let's celebrate. Amador is in the yellow. That's optimistic, and it gives us some optimism moving forward.
Hopefully with us having better numbers than them, we can proceed in the same direction.
Well, let's see where that lands us, and of course, beyond the blueprint, what's next coming June 15th? I know there's a lot of talk around what to expect. Let me just give you the details as we understand it. All industries can return to usual operations with common sense risk reduction measures. The top two is masking properly and vaccinating. If we continue to stay vigilant, wearing our masks, getting the vaccine, we can expect to see that. Now, the state is holding its option to change or revisit that date. They will base it on two criteria: equitable vaccine availability to all Californians who desire to have that vaccine, and a consistently low burden of disease. So the state will monitor hospitalization rates and vaccine access and efficacy as we see the variants. Total vaccines here in Calaveras County, 34,047 as of today. Now, how many of those are just a first dose? 44% of Calaveras residents. Fully vaccinated, slightly lower, at 34%. So what we want to encourage is the clinics shown to you here today, Consolidated Fire, Genu Lind Road in Valley Springs, 9:00 to noon, you can receive the Pfizer. Or if you're interested in a single dose, you can pop in for a Johnson &amp; Johnson. Those walk-ins are welcome. Tomorrow, San Andreas Library, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. We did encourage a later time slot to get to individuals that are having difficulty getting out of office or work, so Pfizer first dose. We did mention two weeks ago, the homebound COVID-19 vaccination opportunity. These are for individuals who are residents of Calaveras County unable to leave home due to their own limited mobility. That phone number, 209-419-7314, and we will come to you, one-time vaccination. Remember, myturn.ca.gov is how you can register to get your vaccine. Now, with that, I do want to remind you that we have Doug Archer and Dr. Ramirez on the line if they would like to add anything, and I'm also available for any other questions.
Board members? Ms. Callaway?
Do we still need to encourage testing?
Yes, we certainly do. Thank you for that question.
And could you remind us where the testing site's still at?
Yes.
Ironstone, and since the fairgrounds closed?
What I'll do is have Deputy Director of Public Health, Colleen Rodriguez, speak to that.
Okay. And my second question is on page six of your presentation, beyond the blueprint, what's next? Is there any talk by the state public health of making changes by county?
That is not something that I have heard. Again, I'm going to push to Ms. Rodriguez to represent that, but I also want to point out before I do that, all masking due to Cal-OSHA rules for workplace will remain. And I know that's a difficult sort of delivery. Cal-OSHA, or I should say OSHA, I'm not saying Cal. OSHA will be meeting early June to start their conversations around getting inconsistency, but we have no information as to what's going to happen. But your OSHA rules around the workplace will remain, but go ahead.
So on June 15th, when other organizations, businesses can non-mask, masking will still be required at Government Center or...
All businesses that are under the rules of OSHA.
Of OSHA?
So that's not just government, that would be entities. And Colleen, if you can speak to that more clearly?
Hi, Supervisor Callaway. So a couple of points of clarification for the 6/15 announcement. One thing that we would be remiss in not mentioning is that there probably will be guidance around schools, particularly for youth, because if you consider the fact that there's a lot of children under the age of 12 who can't get vaccinated, and so there will be guidelines around that. The state has also not necessarily said, or committed, I should say, that masks will absolutely go away on 6/15, and so keep posted for that. The point of clarification around Cal-OSHA, Cal-OSHA and CDPH are actually trying to work together so that whatever, so that the two are having the same mask requirements, but it may take some time for the Cal-OSHA part to go into effect. So the masking part with CDPH is something that they're really working on, but we don't have any answers yet. And as far as testing goes, their testing center is still available on Tuesdays at Ironstone, and then also available at the Sonora Fairgrounds. And then was there another question that I missed? I'm sorry.
If I may follow up on that, Ms. Callaway. Cal-OSHA had originally set their rules, and they said there would be a, they set October of this year for the time that they would change them. And right now, what I'm understanding is they're not changing them with the June 15th. They're going to sit down with CDPH and try to align with them, but they aren't necessarily aligning what the CDC has posted recently on the reduction of masks and their criteria?
So I don't know what they will actually discuss. Go ahead, Colleen.
Sorry. So Chair Stoppard, it's very confusing, but what I will say to you is that originally, Cal-OSHA was supposed to meet on May 20th. They've delayed that until the first week in June. What we anticipate will happen is that they, in collaboration with CDPH, will start, because, you know, the beginning of June is just next week, they will start to figure out where CDPH is going to go, and CDPH is trying to figure out if they're going to go with what CDC is saying or what is best for Californians based on their, based on our current information. So we should have more information within the next week or so, that is barring them delaying the meeting even further.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. I really appreciate the follow-up. Ms. Callaway, I did jump in when you were turning your light back on. Was there anything further? No? Okay. Any other board members? That basically answered what I had right there. Thank you for the question, Ms. Callaway. So is there anything from Mr. Archer, or Mr. Ramirez, or Dr. Ramirez?
I just want to say, I know there's a lot of questions regarding masks, masks in the workplace, masks in public, et cetera, and just to focus on a lot of these common sense preventions for COVID. The fact, the reality is, COVID's still here, even though we have decreasing rates, and I want it to go away just as much as everybody else, and the most common sense way to kind of make this decrease, all these rates at this time, is the vaccine. So if we could really echo that over and over to everybody, the more people that get the vaccine, the lower we're going to see our rates, and the closer we can get back to COVID. So I think that's very important.
Thank you, doctor.
The only thing I have to add, we closed our, had our last vaccine clinic last Saturday on, there were 240. And we also will continue providing testing. We use the San Andreas Clinic. We have a large infrastructure top of the San Andreas line, so we have testing.
Mr. Archer, you're cutting out. I'm not sure.
All right. I was just, we have testing capability at our San Andreas Clinic, right by the hospital. So we're just offering that we have more testing capability as well.
Ms. Callaway?
Mr. Archer, is Mark, one, do you need to make an appointment to get tested, or you can just drop in any day?
You do need a call, and I don't actually have a phone number with me right now, but we have signage, and it's on the Mark Twain Medical Center website. You just need a call ahead and an appointment, but we do same-day testing.
Is Mark Twain going to be doing any inoculations?
If they, I mean, we'll still work with the county if they do need some, you know, manpower support. We are offering vaccinations to our new hires and to our staff, and we're still waiting for some guidance from CDPH on inpatient vaccinations. So once we have that guidance, we'll hopefully start vaccinating our inpatients if they want, but we don't have any future clinics planned at this point.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, I believe we're good for public comment?
There is no public comment at this time.
No public comment at this time. No public comment at this time. Anybody in the audience that would like to speak now? Thank you. Is there any final board questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. Thank you, Mr. Archer. Thank you, Ms. Allen, and Ms. Rodriguez for your report. With that, we'll move on to reconstructions and acknowledgements. Human Services approve a proclamation declaring May 2021 as Military Appreciation Month. Mr. Toffenelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we have veterans out there sitting? Robert, I know you are. We have another veteran there. Brian? You guys want to stand up and come up to the podium, please? Can you state your name, please?
I'm Brian Galicia, U.S. Navy Veteran and County Veteran Services Officer.
Angela Sebley, Marine Corps Veteran, and the Veterans Service Representative for the county.
Robert Pakenger, Air Force, United States Air Force Veteran, Public Works Department Director.
Thank you. And we have Mr. Gueramendi.
Jack Gueramendi, U.S. Army.
Well, we have a proclamation, as Mr. Chair Stoppert read, we have a proclamation declaring May 2021 as Military Appreciation Month. Whereas at any one time, over 1.3 million active-duty military servicemen and women who have voluntarily left their homes and families are standing by to defend our country at a moment's notice. And whereas, over 1 million U.S. National Guard and Reserve personnel dedicate one weekend a month and two full weeks a year to continue training that they are ready to ship out when called on. And whereas, millions of families and friends sacrifice the presence of their loved ones to do the honorable work of our nation's armed forces, knowing the possibility that they may not return. And whereas, the United States Congress in 1999 officially designated May as National Military Appreciation Month to remind Americans to celebrate this patriotic month that pays tribute to those who have sacrificed their lives in defense of freedom. And whereas, the month of May has several days of observance regarding the U.S. military, including Loyalty Day, Victory in Europe, or VE Day, Military Spouse Appreciation Day, Armed Forces Day, and Memorial Day. And whereas, on federal holidays in Calaveras County, local communities place flags along the main road sides and memorials to show support of military service and members and And for that, any comments we may have? Yes, Brian?
Good morning, Chair Stoppert, members of the board. Once again, I am Brian Galicia, Calaveras Veteran Services Officer, and like to submit the following statement.
Can you remove your mask while you speak? Thank you.
Absolutely. One of the definitions of sacrifice is an act of giving something valued for the sake of something else regarded as more important or worthy. To those serving in our armed forces, sacrifice is the daily norm. The sacrifice of leaving their homes and families to don the uniform of their respective branch of service, to endure the rigorous training required to do the job that they have volunteered to do, to stand watch for many long hours in so many different and hazardous conditions. They write out the pain from wounds received in combat and that of watching their friends deal with theirs. And we have all heard the phrase, "All gave some, and some gave all." Those who gave all, of course, made the ultimate and greatest sacrifice. Then there are those left behind, the mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, husbands, wives, sons and daughters, and countless others. What about their sacrifices? They willingly gave their loved ones their blessing to serve our country, to take the risks so many of them before had taken to protect the freedoms we as Americans enjoy daily. And for some of these left behind, their sacrifice is permanent. Every member of our armed forces know they may have to sacrifice their own lives for the sake of our great country. They knew this when they enlisted or were appointed, yet they did it anyway. They did it with their loved ones standing behind them in support. May is National Military Appreciation Month, and as stated before, it encompasses several days of celebration and remembrance. Loyalty Day, Victory in Europe, or VE Day, National Military Spouses Day, Armed Forces Day, and of course, Memorial Day. I stand with all of Calaveras County in appreciation of those serving in our nation's armed forces and their families. This sacrifice is enough for us all to stand behind them and appreciate them, not just in this month of May, but all year long. Thank you.
Any other comments? Public comments?
No public comments on this cycle.
Thank you. So with that, I'm open for a motion.
Mr. Toffenelli, I just want to thank all our armed services, the ones that made the ultimate sacrifice, the ones that even when, not in times of war or police action, that have served to represent the country and show that force out there to maintain our service, our freedoms, and the ability for us to be able to sit up here today and make these decisions. We appreciate everything you've done for us so that we can maintain this. With that, Mr. Toffenelli, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Stoppert. Do I have a second?
I have a second, Mr. Toffenelli.
Thank you, Supervisor Gueramendi. So I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Now, therefore be it proclaimed, now, therefore be it proclaimed, the Calaveras, County of Calaveras Board of Supervisors proclaims the month of May 2021 as Military Appreciation Month in the County of Calaveras and encourages its residents to show their gratitude. Passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, State of California, this 25th day of May 2021. And Brian, can you stand and come up to the podium, please?
I will present this to you. Let me come out here.
Okay.
Okay, why don't we stand right over here? Or you can do it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. General public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. Madam Clerk, let's give a fair amount of time for anybody that may want to dial in. Is there anybody in the room that would like to make a public comment? While we go ahead and give the time for the other people?
Yeah, hello, my name's Clark Moore. I'm actually here for a civics lesson. I just wanted to see how the operation works. My voice will be heard in another day.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
We have Mr. Staunton on the line.
Is there any other public comment, or give time, Mr. Staunton, to work out any technical issues that are there?
There is no other public comment.
All right.
For Mr. Staunton.
I'll get, I'll give it another 15 to 20 seconds. With that, you have the opportunity now to come into the board chambers. There's proper spacing here, so there are multiple avenues to be able to present public comment, if you so wish, you know, barring any technical issues with all the proper You know?
I actually think we lost connection.
Okay. You know, let's go ahead and take our 10-minute break. If the thing is not fixed in 10 minutes, then we'll move on from a public comment. There's multiple avenues to present comment now. We are back. So if there's any further public comment, Mr. Staunton, are you there?
Mr. Staunton, are you there?
With that, we have another course for people to show up if they don't have the electronic ability to be able to call in?
Hi, I have a public comment.
Okay.
For Mr. Carl Staunton.
If that's it, we've given ample opportunity. We'll move on. Consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be-
Mr. Carl Staunton's on the line.
And?
I am here.
All right.
Good morning.
Counting down, Mr. Staunton.
Okay, this is general public comment. I'll try to get this over quick. I'm sorry for interrupting you in the middle of your announcements of the consent agenda. I'd like to thank public health. They did offer me a vaccination. Another county got to me before they did, so I had to cancel that appointment. But I'm very pleased that they are doing that program. And I'd just like to remind them that even though they believe that they're getting out there with the information about these programs, about these clinics, they're not. They're using what is typically referred to in the county as community partners to do their, to do their advertising announcements, and they really need newspapers and, you know, radio, and, well, they use internet, but I don't know to what effect. So I'd like to, but I would like to say thank you to those folks. I'd like to remind all departments that using these community resources, community partners, is not doing the county and the public as much good as they might believe and for them to actually, actually work outside of the comfort zone. I'd like to thank the board chair, who is, Mr. Stoppert, you are doing a pretty darn good job. Marita Callaway did a fantastic job last year, and she's trained you well. I'd like to, I'd like to thank the various departments that have been providing information and helping me, and I'd like to say good morning to everybody and take care. Have a wonderful day. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Staunton. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda one more time. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. My understanding is, Mr. Oliver, is there a consent agenda item you would like to have Okay. Is there any items board members would like to pull?
I guess I'll pull number 10.
I believe that's the one Mr. Oliver would like to remove, because we need to do some revisions on it prior to June 8th meeting. So at this time, I think we should pull it for him and move it to June 8th if the board's in consensus on that.
I would agree.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further items that board members would like to pull? My apologies, Mr. Gueramendi. Is there any items that staff would like to pull? Are there any public that would like to pull an item, other than 10, because it's been moved to June 8?
Ben, can you hear me?
Yes, or Mr. Feriani?
Supervisor Stoppert and board members, Paul Feriani with Integrated Waste. I would like to pull items 24 and 25, and we will return on June 8.
Yeah, those are on the regular agenda, Mr. Feriani, but we will consider that when we move on to the regular agenda. Thank you. Thank you very much. So is there any public that would like to pull any items? I don't believe so at this time.
There is none at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. Is there a second? Don't make-
Second.
Light?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gueramendi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes on five votes of the board. With that, we'll move on to the regular agenda at this time. As Mr. Feriani just relayed to us, we will be moving items 24 and 25 to the June 8th meeting. There are a few parts to it that we're going to have to adjust before presentation. So item 22, planning. Conduct a public hearing and adopt a resident- Conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution to approve LLA 2031 for Roland and Franciska Chabram. Miss, well, that's, Chabram. My apologies. Ms. Collins?
Ms. Catherine.
Okay. Gina?
Yes.
Or Amber?
Who we got? Gina will take over.
Okay. Good to see you, Amber.
Thank you. Are we ready?
Yes, we are, Gina. Good to see you also.
Good to see you, too. So much like most of our ag preserve contracts, this is a two-part action that's before you today, so we'll go ahead and start with the first part, which is a lot line adjustment. The applicants, Roland and Franciska Chabram, have requested approval of a lot line adjustment 2031, requesting to adjust the boundaries between two parcels that they own, which happen to be in two different ag preserve contracts, one under contract 364 and the other under contract 324.
Ms. Catherine, my apologies. I am opening the public hearing at this time.
Oh.
My mistake, but I want to get that in before, our county council actually just messaged me, so I just need a minute.
Okay, continuing on in the public hearing. The property is located on the southeast, southeast of Paloma Road. Gillum Road actually bisects the 742.49 acre ranch, which is currently comprised of three different ag preserve contracts. How this all came about was the Chabrams actually applied to the California Rangeland Trust to enter their entire 742.49 acre ranch into a conservation easement. The California Rangeland Trust accepted their request but does not want to include the existing residents in the conservation easement. The home is located on an 87.64 acre parcel. Wanting to include as much land in the conservation easement as possible, the Chabrams applied to the county for a lot line adjustment to reduce the residential parcel to 43.64 acres, which is in excess of the minimum 40 acre parcel size allowed by the County General Plan. The lot line adjustment does change the legal description of the two ag preserve contract boundaries. Therefore, we have to consider new legal descriptions and re-describing the ag preserve contracts, which was a condition of the lot line adjustment. So pursuant to Government Code Section 51257, upon findings by you, the Board, the two contracts may be rescinded and new contracts established. Evidence of those findings are actually noted in your staff report as well as rolled into the resolution I have prepared for your approval. Obviously, our recommendation to you is that you adopt the resolution approving lot line adjustment 2031. You have any questions?
Any board questions? If not this time, please, Ms. Catherine, go ahead and proceed.
So that concludes my short presentation for the lot line adjustment. You'll need to take action on that resolution before we can move on to part two.
Any public comment or statements by the applicants?
I think everything is said.
Thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion if there's no further board comments.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm familiar with the applicants and where this property is. It's actually District 1 in my district. I've been to the property several times, and actually, this is part of, going to be part of the easement for wagon trail to be put over here and bought part of this acreage as, so I will move this item, very happily to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the Board. With that, we will, I want to make sure I get this right, Ms. Catherine, because, so we'll move on to item 23. Planning. Conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution disestablishing agricultural preserve contract number 313, 324, and 364, and simultaneously establishing agricultural preserve number 382 pursuant to the Williamson Act for Roland and Franciska Chabram on behalf of the Chabram family trust. My apologies once again. I'll probably get it wrong again, too. With that, I'm opening the public hearing. Ms. Catherine.
Thank you. So part two, very simply said, as a condition of the lot line adjustment, the applicants must re-establish new legal descriptions for their ag preserve contracts. So they have proposed to the county to disestablish the three existing contracts and basically roll them all into one new contract. So all of the land that is currently under contract will remain under contract. The only difference is we go from three contracts to one, which will make record keeping a lot simpler, their annual reporting a lot simpler, and there's no loss of land out of the preserve. So 742.49 acres, disestablished three contracts, and establishing one. Any questions?
Any public comment? With that, are you ready for a vote? Because I'll close the public hearing if we are, Ms. Catherine. Is there any further recommendations you'd like to make?
No, no further recommendations.
Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Mr. Toffenelli.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I will move this item.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli.
One second.
Thank you, Ms. Follendorf. I'll just, Chabrams, I got it right once. I just want to make sure I do that today. Thank you for bringing this forward very much. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes on 5-0 vote of the Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And your staff, either in planning and in public work, was so helpful and so cooperative. They were the bomb and we are, so thank you so much.
Yeah, good, the staff is very good. We do appreciate the good work that you do.
Absolutely, we couldn't lose to them. It was really difficult. Thank you, guys.
Did you hear that, Ms. Catherine?
Yes.
All right.
She's lovely.
So with the final two items being pulled for June 8th, we will go ahead and move on to supervisors' announcements. In compliance with Government Code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings extended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out. Mr. Guerrimendi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We are, no announcement, but I did have a question. I wanted to sort of bounce around this board a little bit. And that is, and I know Gary and I ran into this a little bit when we were doing the facilities, and Amanda and I ran into this when we were doing strategic planning public meeting yesterday. But we need to have a conversation as a board to set a philosophy as far as whether we want to be centrally, our facilities to be centrally located or distributed throughout the county as they currently are. I recognize that, you know, I've got a strong opinion, but this board hasn't made a determination as to what our philosophy is. So when we talk about things like Health and Human Services building, or where public health will go, or any of these things, we just haven't had, you know, we need to sort of set a course and say, we want to be here or we're okay being out throughout the community. And so I was hoping at some point, I don't see, need a study session, but just an agenda item so we can all be on record as to what everybody else wants to do.
Well, maybe we could add it to the study session in the middle of June, you know, providing that we have some room, and then that could be part of, you know, the conversation for that day.
That would be great. I mean, whenever we could get it on there, just, we need something to lean against rather than just each of our independent opinions about where things ought to go.
Understood, understood. I think all the, I'm not hearing objections from the rest of the Board. I want to do a poll for Marita's sake. Okay, thank you, Mr. Guerrimendi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
There's something else, I'll follow up that we're aware of from RCRC. Also, I would like to have the discussion with you. But, Ms. Callaway?
No, nothing.
Thank you. Mr. Toffenelli?
I have nothing, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I have a couple announcements. Yesterday, we, Chief Supervisor Guerrimendi and I attended the strategic planning and financial meeting with members of that Board, and we'll be bringing bylaws back to the Board of Supervisors that would dictate that new committee. And it's been pretty successful. It's been great conversations, and you can review the minutes now on the Board Supervisors' meeting calendar. Now, there's two things happening tonight. One is a bike trail feedback for the county. If you're interested in giving feedback for bike routes, you can go to BikeValley2CRA.com, and they have a Zoom link to get feedback from the public on bike routes around Calaveras County. And then the other is, tonight is CCWD's town hall meeting down in Calaveras. Jeff, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Follendorf. We'll be bringing it before the Board soon for amendment, but we have our CS EDD meeting, Central Sierra Economic Development District, which consists of Alpine, Mariposa, Tuolumne, Amador, and Calaveras Counties. We're looking at bringing Mono County into the fold, so that's something that we'll need to approve. It'll be, it'll be a change to our group and part of the process, so hopefully, the Board will be willing to consider that as we move forward, which, you know, which, it's only in the beginning state, so that's, that's for the future. The other thing I want to bring up is the fire safe regulations being moved forward by the State Forestry. And, you know, Mr. Oliver's reached out to quite a few of us individually. I've been in the talks on this with a few other people across the state for quite some time. Mr. Guerrimendi's RCRC, and they have a strong approach, supported by 36 counties. I believe CSAC's supporting RCRC, and it seems that these regulations are being pushed through regardless of the perspective and comments put forward by, you know, the rural community, which this affects significantly. These are nothing new to come down the road. The CAL FIRE or CDF even back during the 90s was pushing a lot of these, but at no time during that time did they want to be the enforcement agency. Well, the Department of Forestry is asking CAL FIRE now to be the enforcement. Typically, they'll want to pass it out onto the local jurisdictions. In the past, the interpretation, whether, you know, there can be certain, you know, interpretations or leniencies put forward was left to the certain counties, and I think this ties our hands now. So, you know, as we come forward, I would like possibly an item to be put on for June 8th to support this, but I would like support from the Board to go forward with Mr. Guerrimendi, comprise a, comprise a letter of support for RCRC's perspective. I think they've got it under control for the most part. And, you know, is there any objections to moving forward with this with support of the Board?
Mr. Chair, you're correct. RCRC is, we are in this deep, as you guys are all familiar, RCRC doesn't always like to be the pointy part of the spear, but on this one, we are, there seems, we're going to have a board meeting next month and talk about this as a full board again, but really, these regulations are just going to kill us in this, in this, in this county and in all rural counties.
Top to bottom.
And we have, we have no choice but to dig in, and that's not how we like to work, but, I mean, we can't, no one will be able to build a house.
Right.
If we want to do this.
And I completely understand. That's why I want to agendaize this. I want us to talk about this openly, publicly, even if it's just informational item, and with direction for us to be able to support RCRC as the Board put for June 8th, because this is definitely something the public needs to know about. I think it affects all of us from every, in every aspect across the county.
Mr. Chair, maybe when we agendaize that, we could, I will ask the staff from RCRC to pipe in, because they could give us, they're far more involved in this than we certainly could be.
Yes, absolutely.
Maybe they could help us on the presentation.
That would be phenomenal. You know, I've talked to a few people that have been dealing with this since the 90s, so, yes, yes. All right, sounds like the Board's in favor of that. I'm not hearing objections. Ms. Callaway, are you in favor of it? Thank you, ma'am. If there's no further comments by the Board members, we'll adjourn. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, great job today.